Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the school committee of the town of Foxborough. Today is June 3rd. It's 7:00 PM. I will proceed to read our agenda. At 7 o'clock, we're going to have a vote on the proposed FY '20/ FY '22 Food Service Memorandum of Agreement that we discussed in a 6:30 executive session. At 7:05, we will entertain any visitors who are here. 7:10, we will have an approval of minutes. At 7:15, we are happy to welcome the Foxborough High School Award Winning Jazz Band and Mr. Bush and Ms. Tidoldy to talk about the Essentially Ellington Festival. At 7:35, we will have the introduction of one of our two new assistant principals, Mr. Andy Servideo at Foxborough High School. Dr. Timothy Frazier is our second new assistant principal at the Ahern Middle School, and he's unfortunately not able to be here tonight, but we will meet him next meeting on June 17th, hopefully. At 7:50, we are going to have our mathematics pre-K through 12 curriculum review with Dr. Mellow, Ms. Sue Carl, and Ms. Noel Hendrickson. At 8:35 PM, we are going to review the superintendent's evaluation process with Dr. Berdose. 8:55 PM, we're going to go over emergency generator service and maintenance bid award with Mr. Yuknet, and at 9:00 PM, we will entertain any other matters. Okay. So, at 6:30, we had our executive session to discuss the proposed FY '20 to FY '22 Food Service Memorandum of Agreement. Mr. Yuknet gave us an excellent summary of the proposed changes, and we had a good discussion. Does anybody want to make a motion on the Food Services Memorandum of Agreement? Or is there any further discussion?
I'll make a motion that we accept as presented the FY '20 through FY '22 Food Service Memorandum of Agreement.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion before we vote? Okay. All those in favor? 5-0-0. None opposed. Okay. Do we have any visitors who wish to be heard this evening? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to our approval of minutes, and we have executive session minutes from May 20th, 2019, and regular meeting minutes. I guess the executive session ones are on top, so we could start with those. Does anyone have any changes?
I make a motion to accept the executive session minutes from May 20th, 2019, as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Could I get a motion to release the executive session?
I'll make a motion to release these minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? 5-0-0. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to our regular meeting minutes from our May 20th, 2019 meeting. Does anyone have any changes, corrections, updates? I had none.
Yay!
Yay! Everyone's happy about that, I know.
Good, good. This is good. We're off on a roll.
I did good, didn't I?
You did. Very nice job.
Very excellent.
You were thorough.
So, I'll make a motion that we accept these minutes as presented from the May 20th meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? 5-0-0. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the much more fun part of our meeting, Mr. Bush, Ms. Tidoldy, would you like to come on up? Come on. Our jazz band, you want to gather round?
I'm gonna sit right here.
They're gonna be over here.
You can just, yeah.
Me, too. You can just go all the way over so they can see.
So the microphones can hear you if you pick you up.
That's cool.
Okay? Great.
Actually, you can take that microphone, too, right near the end of, right near Brandon.
Okay.
There.
All right.
As far as it'll go.
Perfect.
Perfect.
So, my name's Aaron Bush. For those of you that don't know me, I'm the band director here at Foxborough High School, and this is the Foxborough High School Jazz Ensemble. We were so fortunate and honored to be part of the annual Essentially Ellington Festival last month, and this is just one example of an outstanding musical opportunity that we have that is greatly and really completely due to the support that the school committee has of our one-of-a-kind curriculum. The music curriculum here at Foxborough High School is and has been for the past 40 years one-of-a-kind in Massachusetts and, if not, in the country. It's special, it's unique, and you make that possible through your continued support of all the activities, and this is an opportunity that we have that's due to that. So, thank you so much for your continued support. We love you dearly for that, really.
We love your music.
Thank you. Thank you. So, the Essentially Ellington Festival is one-of-a-kind, it's life-changing, and I'm gonna have our students speak to you about that. Before I have them speak, I wanted to show you a little bit of what the weekend looked like. I can briefly tell you that participation in the Ellington Festival begins with a blind audition of hundreds of applications over the country. The top 15 groups from the nation and Canada are selected, and they are brought out for a weekend in May to interact with members of Lincoln Center Jazz Orchestra led by Winton Marcellus, have jam sessions, hang with the other students. It's one-of-a-kind, really, in the world, and then it's a competition, so they compete on the stage at the House of Swing at Frederick P. Rose Hall in New York City. So, some of the pictures here I can show you. One of the first things the students do when they get there is they participate in jam sessions with other members of the ensembles, and the jam sessions are actually joined by members of the Lincoln Center Jazz Orchestra. So, that's Marcus Printup, who is a guest artist here at Foxborough High School multiple times, playing with Mike Hussey right there, and you can see some of our other students, Cole Hovey, our pianist, playing in the Appel Room overlooking the city. These students are really treated like celebrities and professionals for the entire weekend. They have dinner, a beautiful catered dinner with members of Lincoln Center Jazz Orchestra in the Appel Room. And at the end of the evening, several of our students received Outstanding Soloist Awards. All four of our sections from the Jazz Ensemble received Outstanding Section Awards, trombone trumpet saxophone and rhythm section. That's Geneva Raymond.
Isn't that a first, that all four?
It is. Yes.
I don't ever remember all four. Excellent.
We're very fortunate.
Bravo!
Yay!
Is this the full, nobody's missing?
There's a few students missing, but this is the...
How many students are missing?
I'd say about three or four.
Three or four? Boys, girls? Both?
Yep.
Okay.
So, as you can see, some of our students receiving their picture there with Winton. It's Connor Hoyt. Mike Hussey. Liam Silver. He was very overwhelmed.
You're getting the secret message, right? What, how it really works?
Yes. This is us performing. We were fortunate to be selected as one of the top three finalists for the weekend, and as your reward beyond just the experience of the whole weekend, you play with a member of the Lincoln Center Jazz Orchestra in the final concert. This is us playing with Ted Nash.
Wow.
Soling with Connor. And this was right when we were selected as one of the top three bands in the announcement portion, and these pictures are beautiful. If you look at the pictures, each time you can find a different person to focus on, and it's amazing. It's really a, it's a beautiful celebration. And we were fortunate to have Mr. Massey there supporting us with his entire family for the entire weekend, and he was able to sit with us and experience it with us.
And Diana didn't look happy at all there.
Yeah. This is Mr. Massey's excellent photogenic ability there.
If ever, I've been down three or four different times when you've gone. It is an incredible experience. If you have never gone, do sometime.
So, I can also, this is us backstage, show you a brief recording of our performance in the House of Swing. So, I'm just gonna go to exit full screen, and it's right there.
Nope, it's on the other explorer tab.
This guy right there?
Yep.
Nice.
It's all the way to the right. And you can maximize the screen.
Awesome.
There you go.
Look at this. So, this is from our set at the beginning of our performance, and I'm gonna play for you our first tune.
And now, let's welcome our next band. They're from Foxborough, Massachusetts. Please welcome the Foxborough High School Jazz Ensemble.
These are the judges sitting at the bottom of the screen there. Winton is directly in front of the band.
Were you nervous?
Yes.
Once you got playing, though, didn't you relax a little bit?
No.
Some of them did.
You'll notice, too, that all the music in this festival is memorized.
It's all memorized.
So, they have no music stands.
Oh, wow. It's all memorized.
Yes, ma'am.
Did we lose the sound? No. They didn't start playing yet. Sleep deprived.
So, I wanted to open it up to the students to speak about their experience, or if you have any questions that you'd like to ask them.
How many hours, on the average, do you practice each day? I mean, you have to practice every day, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How many hours? Does it vary on different days?
Yeah. Well, we do a lot of in-school playing. We have a Wednesday night rehearsal for two and a half hours. Rhythm section is another hour on top of that, or another hour and a half on top of that.
And the rhythm, another hour on top of that?
Yeah.
So, in total, the rhythm section plays for four hours.
Four hours, yeah. So, we play, obviously, in-school for our period, like, when we have that allocated time in school, but then we also have out-of-school rehearsals, morning sectionals. Some sections run their own sectionals, but besides that, I would say, in order to achieve, like, the level of excellence that we do, everyone has to practice at least, like, two hours every day on top of that, at home, or an hour or so.
So, actually, you might put in a six-hour day.
Oh, you could easily put in a six-hour day.
How about the pianist? Where's the pianist? How many hours?
Every single day. I tried to aim for at least two hours, two and a half hours every day, like, mixed classical and jazz practicing because both are equally important. So, on top of all the in-school stuff, I have to practice, like, jazz improvisation as well as, like, classical training, piano as well.
Outside of school?
Outside of school.
On your own time?
Yes.
Between breakfast and getting to school, right?
Sometimes.
And these students are playing more than one instrument.
Right. There's our trippler.
Oh, I see. So, one hanging on the shoulder while they were playing. I know, and I've seen you pick them up. The fact that ev, I'm amazed and so proud, every single section, congratulations, that is a first for Foxborough.
And they're the only ones that got the outstanding saxophone section.
Yes.
And they're the only ones?
Yep.
And you know, the times I have gone, Tammy, I don't remember any school, even the jazz high schools that have played, that have won in every single section. I mean, that is phenomenal. Phenomenal.
Well, I know we have a number of new graduates of Foxborough High School here tonight, and it was their second trip to the Ellington Festival for a number of you, I know, so you really went out on a very high note. Congratulations to all of you on graduating, on winning, placing third in the, really in the country in jazz bands. In addition to being phenomenal musicians, you're all great kids, and you're great students and athletes and Eagle Scouts and class officers, and there's just so much talent out here, both in the music area but in so many different ways, and it's just been a pleasure to watch you grow as musicians from fifth grade until senior year. So, I'm not gonna cry. I'm all retired from the all-night grad party, so we'll move on to other members.
I was gonna say, just their friendship and their dialogue together, because that's the other thing you see when you watch them perform, is that that time on task that you spend six hours a day working with each other comes out of your play, because you know what the others are gonna do, you can sense them, you can feel them, so that's the other piece of the puzzle that comes together, and I would say that's what's unique about Foxborough.
And the sectionals, their sectional, that unit when you play that together.
Yeah, because that's where it's about, and you just asked about practicing, but what about listening? There's another two or three hours a day of listening, because you can't, you can't get to this level without really deeply understanding, listening to it, and then giving to each other, so that's just huge.
I know.
And that's what's really special about these kids, that they want to do that and get it and understand it and feel it. You can talk about what music means to you, and you know it, and you can really articulate that and play it, so congratulations, really. Wonderful.
Do any of you want to say anything about the festival, how this positively impacted you?
Yeah, sure. This was my third time going to Essentially Ellington, and so from the first time, I was a freshman. That was the year where I was just sitting, I was an alternate, and I was just sitting in the back of the band room behind the lead drummer on my phone, not really paying attention. I didn't really care that much about jazz, but going to Essentially Ellington has really changed that.
That year, that freshman year, really changed it.
Yeah, just seeing all those other bands and seeing, like, feeling the vibe of the audience and how they reacted to other bands. Whenever a cool lick was played during a solo, the whole audience would be like, "Whoa!" collectively, and that kind of gave me an adrenaline rush and just made me a lot more aware.
I mean, so what you were playing, you could see how what is being played really affects.
Yes, and we, like, even outside of Ellington, we see some groups, like, after the first part of the festival, we go over there and we see other groups play. Saw the Kenny Barron Trio my freshman year, and that really changed my perspective on jazz, and it's just the whole culture in a way is like, it's a very free type of music, very free and expressive.
One of the things, I have to say, I was live streaming the, is it called the encore performance, when you get to perform with the member? Yeah, in the evening, because during the day I was at the street painting festival and the play, and so I missed it. But what I thought was so impressive, not surprising, because I know what type of kids you are, but how you cheered for all the other schools and all the other bands when they won, too. So, do you get to spend a lot of time with each other and forge friendships with the other people while you're there? So, that's kind of a cool benefit, too, right? You get to meet other people, but I thought that was really nice to see how you, it wasn't just all about you winning, you were happy for your peers from other places.
Yeah, we have, I thought, we have a lot of time after the jam session, or I mean, before, where we have dinner with people from the other schools, and you don't say, like, we, one person from this school doesn't sit with somebody else from our school, so we, it's all random.
That's great.
So, we get them, and we have usually a member from the Jazz in Lincoln Center Orchestra sits at one of those tables. I had the lead trumpet player in my friend sit at my table, so he was pretty insane, but, yeah, it's a really good experience, even though, like, in between, they have these downtimes in between competitions to go get lunch and stuff, and then there's a Whole Foods underneath, and you meet a bunch of other great people down there.
I love that Whole Foods, by the way. It's my favorite. Has a beer garden.
It's a great one, too.
Has a beer garden.
That's great. Yeah, they're all great people, so they're...
And to kind of, like, add on to that, I think for me personally, but I think I can say this for some other kids in the band, too, speaking on behalf of, like, the other kids that you meet there, I think one of the most important parts of Essentially Ellington is, like, being humbled by, like, what other kids around you are capable of, like, your age, like, it's like kind of the mindset, like, if they can do it, like, I want to work, like, just as hard, if not harder, to get to that level, because, like, everyone who's there is, like, great, like, great musicians, they work hard, they love jazz, but, like, they're always inspired by them to get to that next level, and, like, it's just nice to be immersed in, like, an environment, like, people who are like yourself, who play the same instrument as you, and they inspire you, and they humble you, and it's just, I think that was, like, the most enlightening part about that weekend, done two times I've been.
Very well said.
How many seniors? Who just graduated?
Wow.
Okay. Wow. And I know what you're doing next year, Connor.
Yeah.
Right? And that's fantastic.
Jazz studies.
Yeah. So, where's everybody else heading? What's next for y'all?
I'm going to Bridgewater State University for music ed.
Good for you.
Oh, great. We need good music ed people.
Connor, where are you going so that everybody could hear you?
Oh, I'm going to the University of Michigan for physics and jazz studies.
Great.
Institute of Technology in Boston for computer science.
Good for you.
Nice.
I'm going to UMass Amherst, undecided.
I'm going to Berklee College of Music, professional music.
I'm going to UMass Amherst for horn performance and music education.
Massachusetts Community College for marine biology.
Wow. Nice.
I'm going to UMass Amherst for jazz studies and possibly go, I'm trying for the composition studio, too.
Oh.
That's great.
I'm going to American University, Washington, DC, political science.
You'll have to join some jazz things, it's a relief. We'll miss the back for your downtime.
There's a smile.
Westfield State for music composition and jazz studies.
Excellent.
That's great. That is great.
So many, so many of you are going into some form of music. Is it because of your experience when you went into high school before you started thinking? Did you anticipate that that was the direction you'd go after high school, or did high school here shape that decision?
Or was it middle school?
I, I've always been surrounded by the music in Foxborough. My whole entire family's gone through it, and I grew up playing instruments multiple, all type, and I just, I always felt happy whenever I'm playing them. I've always felt in the moment, and I don't want to give that up. I don't want to give up the memories I've had making music where, after high school, I just go to do business.
So, I just have to tell you, I was at The Banquet last week, and you need to find something in comedy as well, because while everyone's, while everyone's dedications to their teachers were beautifully and heartfelt, beautifully said and heartfelt, you were just, it was fantastic. You did a tribute to Mr. Raymond, right? And it was from the beginning to the very end, it was genuine, but it was also very funny, and you had everybody right along with you, so I thank you for that. I came in late, that's why I got to catch yours, and I really enjoyed it, so thank you.
Many talents, Durbin. Well, so, we can see the Jazz Ensemble this Thursday at the Concert on the Common, and then you guys are taking the show on the road to the other side of the world in July, right? How many of you going to Australia? Wow.
How long will you be gone? 10 days?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Oh, that...
We leave in two weeks.
Oh, yeah.
But we leave July 16th at 12:30 if anyone wants to goodbye.
Either here?
Yep.
12:30 noon?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Fantastic. We know you'll represent us well. We have no doubt about that.
Down under.
Yes.
You all have to say, "G'day."
We wanted to thank you again for having us and so graciously welcoming us to this, and again, this is all possible, our opportunity to receive the wonderful support you show us. We are very fortunate to have you in this school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bush.
Thank you for all the hard work. See you Thursday night.
Yeah, we'll see you on Thursday. It's a good show. Thank you for coming. All right. That was great. Glad they could come.
That's a good suggestion.
Okay, so that was wonderful. Our next agenda item is, would you like to lead us up, is Mr. Andy Servideo, our new FHS assistant principal? I don't know if Ms. Myers-Pacla wants to come up, too? You can, you don't have to. It's up to you.
So, it is my pleasure to be able to introduce Mr. Servideo in a different role. He was just here recently at your last meeting and kind of pinch hitting for us from the guidance department and did a fantastic job with that, but this evening he's here to be introduced as the new assistant principal here at Foxborough High School. Andy's been here for 12 years as a guidance counselor, really well respected by his colleagues and by students, and we had a really lengthy, thorough, as we always do, search process, and I'll let, actually, Mrs. Myers-Pacla talk a little bit about that. So, Diana, if you'd like to come up, but a couple of things that I'd like to just share, some comments that were said about Andy from his letters of recommendation that I wanted to just lift out before we talked a little bit more, and that, some of the comments that really struck me is that Andy provides solutions, he seeks, before providing solutions, he seeks to learn all the information from all parties involved so that he has a full understanding of the situation, and I think that's so important when that, and it escapes me who to quote, but I think it's Stephen Covey, actually, to seek first to understand before being understood, and I think that that's such an important quality as an educational leader, and to see that really called out by one of his references is just really so important. That his experience has afforded him a most comprehensive perspective when looking at school-based matters, and he understands the dynamics in Foxborough, including its rich history, the families that make up this wonderful school, and how the school works. We know relationships are so critical, and to have that piece already with your richness that you bring and really the Foxborough way, if you will, and the relationships you've already formed. He realizes that schools operate best by seeing the big picture and not from one perspective. So important to have so many multiple perspectives. He has served admirably at Foxborough High School for the past 12 years. He is intuitive, thoughtful, committed, meticulously organized, and able to really make good decisions. Again, a highly respected guidance counselor, consistently approaches the challenges of the job with a can-do attitude, and then he's also been very involved, I mean, most recently, here on our teacher negotiation team. Last year with our Preventing and Minimizing Bias and Discrimination Committee, anytime we have anything, he's all... Anytime we have anything, he's always willing to step up and to serve. And that has been over the course of many, many years here. So, um, I will turn it over to Diana for a moment to talk a little bit about the process. And then questions for Andy as well.
Be happy to share the process. We had 59 applicants, um, that we needed to call through. And, um, from the 59, there were about 14 that a committee made up of eight teachers that also included, um, one of our social workers to represent that guidance end of things. Dr. Mello was also on the committee. Uh, we had two students, we had a parent, um, Beth Sylvia, our other assistant principal, and myself, for a total of 13 on that first round. Uh, we offered interviews where we were interested in interviewing three candidates. We wound up with two candidates going forward. The next round then for, um, those two were to also meet with the building leadership team, which are all of our department heads. Also, our media specialist sits on that. And our integration specialist, our technology integration specialist was also in on that. Um, after some time with that, then there was also a conversation with, um, Beth Sylvia, the other assistant principal, and myself. Tour of the building. And then from there, the decision was made. And, uh, our person that we have put forward is Mr. Servideo. And I'm thrilled. This is an individual, Andy's an individual who, um, really everybody felt could hit the ground running, had a good understanding of the community, had great relationships with parents and with kids, knew the direction that we were going in. And again, as Dr. Burdo's has said, has, he's been on so many committees, so he's got a pulse on what is happening really truly within not only the school, not only the school, Foxborough High School, but also the district as a whole too. So I'm very excited. I'm not going to speak anymore. I'm going to let Andy do that and let all of you have that conversation with him. But it was a thorough, I can tell you that, a very thorough process that we had on it, so.
So Andy, why don't you tell a little bit of, about yourself that maybe we, we may not know from what I kind of surmise? And then Diana as well.
Okay, uh, I mean, I, like you said, I've been here for 12 years, so I started in August of 2007. And I think, kind of answered similar questions to this throughout this process. And I think every time I've answered them a little differently. And I think of where I was in 2007. I came in brand new into guidance, never been in education ever in my life, started here.
Never?
Never. Like started first job in education, guidance counselor for Foxborough High School for the class of 2008. And I think when I first got here, I was like, you know what? What I need to do is start making relationship with teachers, with students. That's how we're going to start getting things done. That's how we're going to, you know, make some changes. So I formed a lot of close relationships with the students here, the faculty as well. And then as time progressed, I started kind of branching out from being just in the guidance world and kind of becoming more of a, like a overall global educator. So I was seeing things from a lot of different lenses. I spent a lot of time with administration. Joe Heinricher was the schedule man, so I spent a lot of time with him figuring out how to do scheduling.
Good thing.
It's a complex process, especially here in Foxborough with all the, the different.
Foreshadowing.
Ways we do things, you know? So, uh, I learned a lot about that and I think just forming relationships with teachers and department heads along the way has given me a broader perspective of just my kind of one department. And I think that's one of the things I've been stressing to people across the board for years. It's whether it's your classroom or your guidance office, you need to be more than that. That's great, that's what you do every day, but you need to understand that there's, this is a whole process. We need to collectively work together. We all have our own position, if it's like a, a team, we all have your own position, your own specialty. But ultimately, we are a team and we need to work together for what's best for the team. And I think for me, just being able to see what the school brings and how great we are and how awesome our teachers are, it's like I know that we can continue to do great things for our students. Like, I love it here, I don't want to leave here. I, I went and did my administration program to be an administrator here at Foxborough High School. I'm not using it as a stepping stone. My, my kind of roots are deep. This is where I want to be, this is where I want to stay. And I think ultimately, that's really why I'm really just beyond excited to be here. I know, I've worked with a lot of you and a lot of your children over the years, so, uh, I, like I said, I really am beyond excited to be here in this role. I think, like Diana was saying, I think knowing that what the school needs, what the school has, what we can do. I've been here long enough where I have my opinions on things, what we can do better, what we can tighten up, what we can change, what needs to stay exactly the same. So when I start, I can go, kind of go right in, we can start doing what we need to do and start making a broader change.
I, I'm going to start. I guess I'll take cheers for our, I know I personally was very thrilled when Dr. Berdos told me that you were going to be our new assistant principal. Um, I can't tell you how many conversations I've had. My, my children did not have you as a guidance counselor. However, lots of my friends' children have, and I can't tell you how many times I've heard, Mr. Servideo was wonderful. Mr. Servideo helped us through this or fix this, or he gave us a new perspective. So I, I know that you have a lot of respect in the parent community. And I will say, I just, I was telling Dr. Berdos before the meeting that I, I mentioned to my, my son, who's a junior, that you were going to be our, our new assistant principal. And he's, oh, that's great. So, and that is, that is, well, for me, the highest of recommendations. So welcome, and everything you just said was, you know, a real credit to, I, I think our administration, our school system, our culture here and, and to you. So I'm really happy that you're here.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
So I couldn't, I actually, uh, my kids have been fortunate enough to have Andy. All of them have had, and, uh, I did share with him before I left, um, home tonight that that was one of the agenda items. And I do have to say that there was a collective cheer for you. Because you are, uh, absolutely, uh, held in the highest esteem in my family. And we are not an easy crowd to please, as you know.
Not to run his standards, it's okay.
So anyway, I, I think it's a wonderful opportunity. And we're so fortunate to have you wanting to stay in Foxborough in whatever role. So I'm thrilled that, that we have something that, that's exciting for you. Um, and, cause I know this is something that you've wanted for a while, so congratulations and congratulations to us as well.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Any questions? Well, thank you for coming tonight and welcome and.
Right, thank you for choosing us.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Like I said, I can't, I can't be happier to be here in this role. I, I would, I would have stayed as a guidance counselor if I could stay in Foxborough. But ultimately, this opportunity came here and I figure if I can broaden my scope of how to make the place better, that's what I want to do. So I'm, I'm very excited, but it's definitely a, a team approach. It's not me coming in to fix things. It's me coming in to work as a team with administration, the teachers, the students, the families. That's how we collectively work together. So very excited, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
So one of our goals this summer will be to find someone to fill Mr. Servideo's very big shoes in the guidance department. Yes, we have posted that position, so it is now posted. Very good.
And you must be receiving applications already.
Yes, we are.
I would assume so.
All right, well, Dr. Mello is getting set up for our next very substantial and exciting, uh, agenda item, the mathematics pre-K through 12 curriculum review.
That's why Bren has to stay there, because he has to push the button. That's why you didn't leave me on that side, right? I get that.
Well, whatever works, Rock. Here, you know how it works. Okay.
There we go.
Did you just press? Hi, welcome to Noel Hendrickson and Ms. Suh Carl.
Hello.
Hello. Ms. McCarthy and Ms. McCarthy in the audience. You as well. All right, Dr. Mello and Dr. Berdos, do you want to start us off or who's, would I begin? I, I will, I'll, I'll start off with a little bit, because this really is Dr. Mello's piece with her team there and they've done all the work. But being that I've been sitting in that role previously and having had the opportunity to work with Allison as the K-8 math director, science director, and then Suh Carl in the past, I, I know firsthand going into that, what a great team that they have to be able to do the work. And it is a boatload of work. And the last thing that I'll say before turning it over is I don't really know of any other school district that goes to the depths that we do as far as the comprehensive curriculum review and really looking at our strengths and our opportunities. And, um, so I just want to say thank you for all the work ahead of time, because I know that it was a yeoman's amount of work.
Yes. And I will say that the work was done by the team. I, I visited, but I was, you know, a renter, not an owner. They were there doing the hard work. So I welcome Noel Hendrickson and Sue Carl to the table. And for those of you who haven't been through the curriculum review process with us, for our newer members or people at home, math will come up once every six years in our curriculum review cycle. And during that process, we engage in a self-study, as Dr. Burdo said. I, I really firmly believe in what I love about Foxborough is we, the reason, the reason that we continue to improve is because we're reflective practitioners. So while we are excited about the progress we've made, we always know that there's room for growth. So the process really involves research, so going to the literature and that research, and then also our own research, our action research. So collecting survey data, looking at our assessment data, and really trying to get a full picture of where we are with whatever content area, and this year it happens to be math. Uh, one of the things that they did as a committee was they developed a survey for teachers. And we had great participation rates at the elementary, middle school, and high school. I think almost 100% participation. Um, the surveys ranged between 20 and 30 questions depending on the level. I think one of them had 18 questions. Because they were really customized to the needs of each level. And that was one of the things I was really excited to see, sort of as the guide on the side. The committee was really composed of a diverse group of stakeholders. So we have representatives from every level, elementary, middle, and high school, but then also representatives from different roles. So we had regular education teachers, special education teachers, administrators, different administrators, and the leadership of Noel and Sue. At the end of the complete review, you get the report that shows our outcomes. Usually there are recommendations for professional development, possibly purchase of research, possibly changes in instructional practice. And that's basically what the two of you are going to go through this evening, right? So I will just be sitting here and I will turn it over to you. And, um, really, you are the stars of the show.
Sure, I can be the clicker.
Will you be the clicker?
Okay.
Well, as Allison said, this is the committee right here. And the first thing that we really want to do is just acknowledge.
Thank everybody.
And thank them, because they worked so hard alongside us. We have two members with us tonight behind me. But we just want to thank everybody whose name is up there, because they all contributed and they all really did help this process and make it a really fun and engaging process, I have to say.
I would agree with that.
Oops, sorry.
Okay, so, um, when we first came together, um, I think the first thing that we did was we, we sort of sat down and went through, what are we doing really well? Where do we already see that we might have some needs? And what overall are going to be our goals as we progress through this process? And there are lots of different things that come up, but we narrowed it down to the two that you see up here, which was to evaluate those current instructional resources and how well are they meeting the needs of all of our students? And then to piggyback that, identify any professional development needs to strengthen instructional practices. Last time through the process, it was in some regards a little bit easier. The state was changing our standards and we spent a lot of time looking to see how well did our curriculum at the time meet those standards? We meet them now, we're right on track with that. So this is going to let us, uh, this time around, it let us dive a little deeper into, we're meeting our standards in, in that curriculum. You know, how are we going to do that? What can we do better in the classroom? What resources might we need to help us along with that?
And it really piggybacks at the work we've been doing on equity. So really making sure that we're meeting the needs of all learners.
Correct, correct.
Oh no, you put animation.
I guess you did.
Just a lot of words to throw up.
There's a lot.
We came on, we just kind of tried to call some of the biggest positives that we found, um, coming out of the survey and talking with all these teachers. Um, and I'm not going to read through all of them, um, you can see those. But, um, what really stood out for us was the fact that, like what Sue said, um, it's exciting to be so close to the standards now. Teachers are close to these standards, they live them every day. We're not having to, uh, figure them out as much anymore. Now we're trying to figure out, how do we get to every kid?
Right.
Through the lens of these standards. That's a really exciting place to be in math. So we have a lot of really positive things from our sort of, you know, rigorous assessments that we have, that we've created, to our ongoing professional development, um, for supplemental resources, um, all those kinds of things are really positive. Um, we also, if you want to just click again.
Can I just add to the positive? I think so much of what you said has come from all the work we've done in professional development.
Yes.
Over the last several years and in our continuing efforts to really understand the standards. They were radical, those of you who are here, they were radically different. So we have done so much professional development. And I know from being out in the field that we are really ahead of where many of our colleagues are. And that's something that we're very proud of. And we have a great relationship, so we have great vertical articulation as well. So I think that really speaks to the work that's been done.
Yeah.
Now we'll see what work we have to do next.
But, but we have more to do. We're not quite there yet. Um, so for all the positives that we have, the needs really are about, you're going to keep hearing the same theme. How do we serve all of our students? How do we do better by all the varying, uh, groups that we have, the varying needs that we have from our students here? And again, we're not going to read through all of them. But a lot of it comes down to, um, I can talk to, at the high school level, it's, it's time to sort of call some resources. I know at your level.
Well, it's about, um, time, time for collaboration too, between, um, the adults that are in those classrooms. So co-teaching, things like that, so that we can differentiate and meet the needs, like we said, of all the students. There's some, some specific things in there too about a grade five math program, which we'll talk about a little bit later with one of our recommendations. And an updated sort of, um, replacement of the current adaptive online math program. So specifics that we'll talk about as we go through the, the, um, the presentation. But we'll talk about recommendation wise.
There we go, okay. So identify and implement, well, let me back up just a little bit. So after we went through all of our surveys, we had a lot of discussions about how did we want to present some recommendations. You know, sort of categorizing all of the different pieces that had come up. So the first big recommendation here is to identify and implement appropriate and rigorous programs slash resources and assessments. So I'll speak to the high school need. You heard me just mention it a little, a little bit ago. At the high school, in order to meet the needs of all of our students across all of the levels, we typically do not like to use a single program. We find that a single program really doesn't address all of the needs of our students. So the teachers spend a lot of time going out and creating their own, um, their own worksheets, finding their own activities, tailoring them to the different needs. So the biggest need that came up for us was, um, rather than, we did look at some programs, but rather than go out and purchase a program that's going to, you know, maybe sit on the shelf, we would really like to spend the time taking the talent that we have, the experience that we have, and really starting to create our own program where we would have all those resources in one place. You know, we would have vet them, have vetted them. And then we can use them across, um, all of the different, uh, classrooms that are teaching, let's say, Algebra I.
One of the things that people may not realize is with the advent of the Common Core, and even though Massachusetts customized it to make their own curriculum framework, there became this movement for open resources online. Because with people having the same standards, there was really an opportunity to share resources widely across the country. So you don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Correct.
There are outstanding, high-quality resources coming out of really esteemed organizations that we can use to implement in the classroom.
Yes, yeah, thank you, that's a very good point. Um, the last little piece for us there with MCAS transitioning this year at the 10th grade level to the online assessment, currently we have very little in place for the students to have practice ahead of time. There are some, uh, there are some avenues that, that we have utilized, but we would like to broaden that. So one of our recommendations is actually to sit down and some, develop some formative assessments that will be done, uh, utilizing technology.
So for middle and elementary school, um, kind of piggybacking on the last gentleman's comments, um, I was pretty lucky to come in to a place where things were really well set up for me, because Dr. Mello was the person who had the job before me. She got things up and running big time with guided math, um, and math workshop. So I got to walk in to a pretty well-established, well-oiled machine. So what our focus is in middle school and elementary, and I'm going to bundle them together, because this really came out in the survey as the same. Teachers are proud of their math workshop. They're proud of their ability to differentiate instruction. They're proud of the games they've created so students have agency and choice. They're proud of the guided math groups that they pull based on data. They're really proud of this model. And this is not something we can get from a textbook. It's because of the professional development that they've received, um, to be able, to be able to do this so well. We want to continue with that. I don't want to change anything, we want to continue with that momentum and keep it going. So what that means for us at middle and elementary is that we want resources, supplemental resources, supplemental manipulatives. We want to get the cutting-edge tools to keep these workshops up and running. That's where that's coming from. Um, we do want to upgrade our current online adaptive math program in grades five through eight. And we want to push that down into K to four, because we know with digital literacy and taking computer-based tests in grades three and four, we want to get the, get the kids, um, really familiar with all of that technology as well. familiar with all of that technology as well. You see a little first grader there in the corner, and she's on the adaptive math website there called Redbird. And it's just so natural for them. So we'll continue with that. But that's kind of what came out of our survey data as well.
Yes, yeah.
So now we just have the data to support these recommendations?
Right, so just so that you can see a sample of the questions, you know, what variety of resources do people have, and then how often do they use them? Right, and it's a high school sample.
And so for middle school, this just sort of spoke to us about guided math. Again, how often do they implement guided math? They implement it quite a bit. And so what we're going to do is we're going to keep our base sort of program is Glencoe Math, which is a McGraw-Hill product in grades six through eight. We're going to keep that, because why change? I'm telling you right now, I get a lot of requests for people to come visit Foxborough to see guided math and Math Workshop. They're not coming to see McGraw-Hill products, they're not coming to see teachers teach Glencoe. They're coming because they want to see guided math. They want to see kids in small groups, they want to see differentiated instruction, that's what they're coming to see. What this program gives us is somewhat of a skeleton for pacing, for some consistency across grade levels that we need, but you will not see teachers holding any manuals and doing any of that thing, that sort of thing. So again, guided math is our big push. Grade five is at the middle school, and so it's this sort of in-between for us, right? And so they have said, as a teaching crew, they said, you know what, we really are interested in seeing if we can pilot something for next year. McGraw-Hill has a product that we're going to pilot for next year that would be a really nice feeder into grades six through eight, and so we're going to ask for that pilot.
And I will just remind you that in the, this is way back in the archives here, but in the 2006, I think, curriculum review, we adopted Think Math, and that was before the Common Core standards came out, and that was a K-5 adoption, even though fifth grade was at the middle school. When the standards changed, Think Math and the alignment was way off. So in the 2012 review, we decided we didn't want to throw out the baby with the bathwater because there were pieces that were really outstanding that worked, so we added some supplemental resources. Since that time, the elementary math team has really worked on building their curriculum from the ground up. Grade five has not been part of that process. So they're still feeling the need, and this is a great opportunity to get some consistency with the sixth through eight, because the sixth through eight program we have doesn't have a fifth grade option.
Right. And so again, just to pig, you can keep going. So elementary, like I said, something that they're so proud of, the teachers, you can see a strength for them in math, is their guided math. They're really proud of their workshop, and you see that as a strength. Also, born out of the last math review was the idea that a math specialist would be in each building. I know it's hard to read that, but that's the orange bar there, math specialist per building.
It's a great chance to thank the school committee for that, because that has made a huge difference.
And all the data was outstanding around that, because the impact of that person for professional development, also just for, to be able to be a second person in the room, and having that subject matter knowledge has been so huge for us.
And members of the committee, feel free to chime in anytime.
Okay, so recommendation two. We had a lot of conversation, again, surrounding how do we best meet the needs of all the students? And we currently have special education teachers that are in the classroom along with ed assistants. So the recommendation is to really just to improve the practices at all levels in order to best meet the needs of all the students, including training and implementation. I feel like I want to steal something that Mrs. Spinelli used to say, which was to go from good to great. We're doing a good job, but we really think we could be doing better with this. So the recommendation, actually across all three levels, is very similar. The middle school has one that's just a little bit different, but we really would like the time to research and observe different co-teaching models, and then from there, choose one and implement that model based on what our current staffing and schedule would allow, which is probably going to look very different across all the grade levels.
In many places where a co-teaching model exists, you might think of one special educator and one teacher in the room all day. We know we don't have the staff to support that type of model, but there are many models where we could better leverage the staff that we do have, so that we can really maximize the expertise of both practitioners for the benefit of the students.
And so for middle school and elementary school, you know, it's really tightly wound to that guided math model as well, because the more adults in the room, the more we can differentiate, and not just remediate, but enrich as well. We don't want to forget about that cohort of kids too.
Right.
That's very important.
Yes, it is.
And that came out in the survey as well. You'll see the data.
It did, right. So again, you know, some of the survey questions and some of the responses there. You know, and it really strikes me here that we've got 50% saying that, at best, it's adequate in terms of supporting all students. So again, we want to do better.
And you'll just see that teachers feel very strongly that educational assistants, special educators, and math specialists, they really support their guided math initiative. And the more we can get them timed together to plan is what we're really asking for.
And not to continue to go back to professional development, but when we offer professional development in math, we feel it's really important to include our educational assistants and our special educators, so that everybody has that consistency when working with students.
Yes. So then again, elementary math, how did the following support guided math? So you're going to see, I know, aren't they so...
Happy faces in math. This is one of the things we're very proud of, so we had to show you.
So you see an elementary math specialist there on the right, working with a small group of students.
And that's an example of a tool, when Noel mentioned, having, you know, the latest tools. That's a tool that we did not have for years and years, that was asked for many times. We didn't want to roll it out until we knew that it was going to actually be utilized in the classroom. And to see them being used and to see the understanding that they promote is really powerful.
And there's times too, with tools like that, where, you know, the classroom teacher has a lot going on, it's not just math all day long, especially in elementary school and even into middle school, they're negotiating a million things at once. But to have somebody subject-specific with that knowledge to come in and model that for them, and show them how easy it can be, and to sort of like open the door for them, that's what's going to affect change. Not necessarily us rolling out a PD cart and having us, you know, do it for, you know, demonstrate it through professional development for somebody from outside the district, that's not what we're talking about. That's, this is like embedded onsite, in the classroom, professional development.
Yes, that's a really good distinction, I'm glad that you made that.
So as that talk and conversation continued, one of the other pieces that came out of this was that if we're going to leverage the staff that we have, it would be a recommendation to look at our current schedule, that in order to make that happen, we are going to maybe need to mix some things up. So you can see the recommendation here is to really explore some daily schedules so that we can meet all of those needs of the students, but add in some additional collaboration time between teachers and ed assistants, special educators, whomever, and then some additional math instructional minutes. So you'll see at the high school, we really, we are doing all that we can to really provide some additional time for students who are struggling. We've had a lot of students come in this year from other districts, and you heard Dr. Mello say, that we are doing a really good job with the standards and Common Core, and not all districts are at the same place that we are. And it is a challenge when these students come in from other districts, and, you know, it says Algebra I on their transcript, but it was in eighth grade math. And, you know, where do we put the students now, because they haven't really had our Algebra I and the state standards? And how do we make that, you know, how do we provide them that extra support so that they can catch up on those concepts that they have missed? So for us, one of the big recommendations was to try to incorporate some additional time, especially for those students, to try to fill in some of the gaps that we've been seeing in the more recent years.
And so for the elementary and middle school, I've been working with the principals to find pockets of time that we can have the math specialists have some grade-level-specific meetings with their teachers. And that's going to be happening next year. I'm actually going to be talking about that at the grade-level meetings this week with them. But they are going to be scheduled meetings with them to have some more of that, like I said, the content-specific, ongoing, right-now PD. So we're going to be exploring those options as well.
Right, so again, you can see from our survey questions, that was one of the pieces that came out, you know, how well are we finding people, students prepared that are coming in from out of district? And unfortunately, it's not really, they're not as strong as we would like them to be.
And this is definitely an area we're seeing an increase. We have a lot more students moving in at the middle and high school levels, and you do see foundational gaps, often, not always, but often, particularly students from out of state, because the standards do vary.
Yes, yes. And again, about to exploit, what resources are we currently using? So we were able this year to bring in a second tutor, which has been fabulous, to provide tutoring every day. It had been only three days a week. And to start at 7:30, for a while it was only starting at 8:30, so all students in that first period that had a study never got to take advantage of the tutor. But trying to use the tutor, and then you'll notice the blue bar underneath it is the personal help that teachers are giving after school. So a lot of teachers are spending a lot of time after school, on their own time, really working hard to catch some of these students up. And then, all the different types of students here that we have listed, the special ed students, the students in the Metco program, new to the district, and the highest-performing students. We took a look at all of them, you know, how well do we feel we're meeting all of their needs? And again, not as high as we would really like to see.
Yeah, so, and our sort of last global recommendation is to look at professional development to meet the needs of all students. It's a, like I said before, it's a really nice thing to be so close to these standards and not have to do professional development on sort of, what do these standards mean? What do they look like in practice? Now it's about the students, right? How can we meet all of their needs? And I think we all know that student needs are, you know, they're coming with so many different, various, you know, challenges and needs, and we're not just talking about, like you said, the students that we need to remediate, we're talking about our students that need enrichment, that are the real high flyers. How well are we meeting every student's needs? And so that's a piece of the professional development that we would like to recommend. Yep.
And I love that teachers are asking for that.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Well, it's the atmosphere we've helped create, if they can come and ask. There was a time they wouldn't dare. They worked very hard.
Yeah, teachers are very, very appreciative.
Changed the past seeded school committees for a few years.
Teachers are very...
Create that openness, so that you can come.
And I think we, also being very responsive to what they need and what they ask for is something that, again, I don't hear from every district. Sometimes it's just one PD, one-size-fits-all, and you get what you get, and you don't get upset. We really try hard to customize the PD, much as we can.
Yeah, and teachers are very appreciative of that. They're very appreciative for the time that they have for the PD, and that a lot of times it's a choice, so that they can customize it to meet their needs.
So again, which group of students are you struggling to meet the needs of? You can see the ELL, the sped population, the high third is that orange bar on the left? So teachers are really willing to put themselves out there and say that they need more resources and help to meet the needs of all students. In elementary, on the right side, again, they're looking for more intervention resources and more enrichment resources. Yeah.
Just a little more math in action, so that they can see.
Some kindergarten and some eighth grade.
So what questions do you have for us about our review and our report?
You know, I want to give this formerly-seeded school committee a pat on the back, the different members who have served and helped move it forward. Do you know how many times tonight, in your report, you have mentioned professional development? I couldn't help but notice. And we were attentive to those requests and have built it in for you.
Yes.
And built it in early enough in the year, so that the students benefit.
Correct. Same with the math specialists, honestly. Adding those so that we can have them in each of the buildings.
But, you know, for the overall, the professional and the PDPs and all of that, we've...
I'll just, one of the things I...
Really changed the culture. I think it's changed the climate and the culture for this teaching staff.
So one of the things Noel said before is that we have many requests for other districts to come to see Math Workshop and Guided Math in action. And it's difficult for teachers not to just have a textbook. To be able, to have to pull from all of these different supplemental resources to be able to really package it in a way that's going to meet those guided math groups, it really speaks to our teachers here, and the effort, yes, the professional development, but their willingness and the time that they put into that in order to do what's best for our students. And a lot of districts will not do that, because they either don't have the professional development time, they know the time and the energy it's going to take to get their staff to that level. And it really is, I mean, it's the leadership, but it's the teachers, it's everyone that, it's a lot of work to be able to pull together that. When you have, you come out of another math review, and you're not asking for a textbook at the elementary level, it's different at the secondary level. But at the elementary, to be able to pull all that together...
And that they maintain consistency and rigor, I think really, there's a lot of resources out there that may lack rigor. So the vetting that has gone on with the resources that we use, and the hours and hours that have been put in by the teachers, by the math specialists, by the administration, to really make sure...
Like the open resource, things that you were talking about before. It takes a lot of time to really see what the quality is, and to be able, as you were saying, even culling together all of that.
Well, and I think that just being on the newer side, I think one of the things that's so striking about Foxborough is the appreciation of the craft of teaching. Because nobody getting up there with a teacher's manual is going to be able to deliver excellent education instruction to students, they're just not. And if you're too busy trying to read things out of a manual, that's, we all know that's not good teaching. But the craft, everybody's a little different, but they're appreciated in that craft. When I bring people through, which I do a lot, I have to turn people away, because people want to come so much and see guided math and Math Workshop, I really have to turn them away. But they're always so struck with how it looks a little different in every room, and that's what we love about it, that's what we celebrate.
But yet, the level of learning is consistent.
Because they take the assessment, they work backwards, and they figure out exactly what students need.
Well, that's because every group of young people is different.
Exactly.
Until you have been in front of a classroom, you'll never understand that.
Yeah, it's changing even now.
I think it's an excellent juxtaposition, having trouble speaking tonight, but that last, our last meeting, we had that fantastic group of eighth-grade students who were attending Algebra I classes here at the high school, and the educators who were working hard to make sure that all of their needs were met. And they were, I mean, really the culmination of exactly what you're discussing tonight, and just the excitement they have for math. I mean, that is, that is why we do what we're doing, and everything you're saying tonight was validated, you know, two weeks ago, when we listened to those students right here. So I am always impressed with our curriculum review process. This is actually, I told Sue yesterday, I've come full circle, because this is my seventh year on the committee, so the first curriculum review was the, for me, was the 2012 math review, and here we are again. And it's just, it's really exciting to see, I remember, you know, the standards and how much work there was still to do at that point, and it's all been done. And we're in a really good place with math, and we do have work to continue to do, to go from great to greater, but this is just, you know, really exciting to me. I don't really have any questions, that was just my comment. Anybody else?
So gosh, I just feel so positive, I'm not even sure. Anyway, was there anything that surprised you in the results that you got back?
For me, it was that upper, the enrichment group, how teachers were really struggling to meet the needs of those students, and what we can do...
Not surprising.
Yeah, and especially even in the youngest K to two band, they were, you know, we've got these kids, what do we do with them when they already know what I'm going to say in the mini lesson? So those are conversations that we still need to have, but that did surprise me. I always sort of divert myself to thinking about the reteaching, not the enrichment.
Nobody wants to be back in the days where the teacher says, oh, go read a book.
No.
This is math minutes, we need to be doing math when we have math time.
Right, right.
I'm thrilled to see that, because I, just my experience has been, that's been, that's been an audience that gets forgotten a lot.
It's true, yes, you're right.
And so I'm thrilled to see that, that that's an audience that we need to start, that people feel we need to start paying attention to. Because I do think that it's true, they do forget about, and I remember the days when, you know, you go sit, go sit in that room and read this, and read this, right, and do that.
Right, right.
As you look ahead, especially with number four in professional development, what's your ideal timeline? I know you're starting right away in next fall, but do, does the committee have a vision of, you know, when you'd like to start trying, piloting some of these models? Once you find ones that you believe in that is?
Well, we talked about using at least the first half of next year to really start researching the different models. I know a team from the high school actually has already visited another school to look at a schedule... at a scheduling model, not, not a co-teaching model of any kind like that, but just schedule. How might we change the schedule to allow for some time for some of the things that we were talking about? Implementing that is at least a year out, but potentially trying. I know during our conversation, I've already had two teachers willing to pilot if we come up with some sort of a co-teaching model or something that we would like to try. They already work together now. It's a special educator and a regular classroom teacher. And both of them are on board. As soon as we have something, they're willing to try it. So that could be, you know, again, mid-year if we were to find something.
And how would, if, just ballparking, what percentage of your current special ed staff would you say has a math subspecialty or significant comfort?
So at the high school, we have two special educators that have a very strong math background. So they have, their comfort level is very, very high. They actually teach the alternative classes currently. So they're very, already invested in the, the standards and are very much on board with all of that. So, and they're the only two special educators that come into the math classroom. We have a lot of ed assistants that come in, some who've been here for several years. So, you know, they've been working with the same teachers or at least the same course for several years, so they have a high comfort level. And then as new teachers come or new ed assistants come in, you know, we work hard to bring them up to speed and make sure that their comfort level is also high.
Out of about how many?
Out of about how ma, well, there's only two that work with the math department. So I can't, I can't really address it globally that way. And we have nine classrooms that had different ed assistants in as well. So some of them are in more than one classroom, but, yeah.
And we were very excited at the middle school to hire dual certified special educators who have a math degree as well this year. And what we want to do is we want to leverage their strengths. So Sue and Karen, next, will be working a lot on how can we play to their strengths through scheduling.
And that's already begun.
That's already, that's why it was called a pilot, actually. If you remember back in one of our recommendations, it's called a pilot in the middle school because we've already started that work. The professional development will be how do we replicate that? How do we take what's working and have that be almost like from the ground PD? Like I said before, we're not, probably not going to bring someone in. We're probably going to see if we can make this be more of a ground swell. But we want to leverage the strength sort of of these dual certified folks who are really amazing. And to find those people is gold. And we've done, we've done a really nice job at the middle school with that.
You know, and I just want to, Michelle was with me on one of the day, so you know that I'm in the new superintendent's induction program, so I have a coach. We were walking through classrooms over at the burrow. And so it was a math lesson. It was the math specialist teaching the lesson with the teacher observing and taking notes as she's watching the math specialist teach the classroom. And Dr. La Croix, my coach that was with, she started to ask questions, said, oh no, that's the math specialist. She was amazed at watching, and that's the embedded professional development right there. And Michelle and I were just like sitting back, just, it was just a beautiful thing to watch. But to see that embedded form of professional development and then to see the teacher just, just soaking it all in and watching strategies, it, it just really speaks to the culture.
And I had the unique opportunity, because elementary teachers generally aren't content certified, you do have some, to teach some graduate courses here in math, and people were really receptive to them. So there was one called Foundations and Number Sense. It was for K to three. I think it may have been before you got your masters, back in the day, I don't know. Maybe you didn't take it. And then we had developing number sense for grades three to five to build that capacity. And we had special education teachers participating in that as well. And then the course, the graduate course on guided math, they have participated in that. And I, I remember thinking the first time I taught it, hmm, they are not having their own classroom. So how, what is the benefit going to be? And the benefit is, they understand the model and they understand their place in the model and they can have peer models. It's not just their students when they take a group, but they can have other peers who would benefit from the instruction. It has really been game changing and they are very on board with learning about math. So while they don't have that credential, I think we've done a lot to build their capacity. Would you agree, committee?
Sue, is this the first deep dive for the co-teaching model? You've had it for a while.
I feel like in a really long time.
Sounds like it.
I think that, I think that in recent years, you know, you do some, you do things the same way, you know, year after year after year. And we are suddenly starting to ask some questions about, is this the best way? You know, what has changed? Maybe it's time for us to relook at it and take a new approach.
Yeah, good. Yeah, good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Good work.
Thank you.
Did you want to tell us about the report cards?
Well, we're going to, I think, let Ms. Callow. Because it really only applies to that one.
We're not quite done.
But thank you all very much.
Thank you for your work on this.
Great work on this.
So yes, thank you for the segue.
So this is just for kindergarten through fourth grade. So I'm, I'm coming with a proposal for the kindergarten through fourth grade report card revisions for you. This was sort of born out of the fact that Foxborough, again, was on the cutting edge of standards-based report cards. There's a lot of towns that have, haven't even started this work or are just starting it now. I think once the, the new standards came out, Foxborough jumped in and said, we want standards-based report cards, which is great. But now's the time that we've lived these standards for a while, now's the time to think about making them a little more parent-friendly. I don't know about you, but I get a lot of questions from people in my town that I live in or, and a lot of parents saying, I'm taking screenshots of report cards and just being like, I don't know what this means. Can you just explain this to me since you understand math, you know, standards? And it's not that difficult, but I think our job, so our teachers know these standards like the back of their hands, but the standards were written for teachers. That's what they were written for. That was the audience, right? And so now can we make these still, still, you know, standards-based, but can we make the, can we make them a little more friendly for our audience? So-
I'm just putting up what you're saying.
Yeah, so the rationale sort of is up there. And now that we understand these standards so much better as well, we took a look at K to four a little more globally and said, are there consistent language we can put in that starts in kindergarten, builds all the way up to fourth grade, like place value understanding, you know, starting with addition and subtraction? But we made the language very similar. We want the parents to hear and see this report card language at parent conferences and feel confident that they understand what the teacher's saying, that it's clear and that it's consistent. So I'm basically going to put up the slides of, I met with the teaching teams. And we took a look at it vertically as well. These are the new proposed standards.
So committee members actually have a black and white document that shows the side-by-side comparison, the one that Tina's holding up, that shows the old, just to have some context, what was the previous language in the report cards? And you can tell it was a little bit more jargony and a little bit more heavy. And it's been streamlined and simplified for understanding.
Sometimes a kindergarten parent might not really understand what one-to-one correspondence is. We know as teachers, we know what that is big time, but we could roll that into other standards that just made a little more sense. We tried to, we didn't, we tried to keep it to the spirit of still keeping every standard because that's really important. But we did sort of combine and sort of made things a little bit more concise. So you can take a look at grade one as well.
And so what Noel was talking about in terms of consistency, you'll see accurately preceding a specific skill that students do. You'll see talking about place value understanding throughout. You'll see the fluency goals for each grade.
Every single grade has to take a look at graphs. And so we decided everything was just going to be represents and interprets data because that's global. We can put a lot of things under that umbrella and parents understand that they're looking at graphs. I mean, that's sort of a little bit more, just a little easier for them to understand. And then the last piece, I don't know if we want to move on to this, but the last piece is-
Do you have any questions about?
Any questions about the standards themselves?
Okay, then we can move on.
They make a lot of sense to me as a parent. I'm like, well, that's much better. Really, I mean, I'm a little past the elementary report cards, but I, I think our parent population will appreciate these changes.
I agree with that. I really think that it was time.
Do we have to vote on these today, these changes?
We, we need you to vote as far as if, if you're able to, willing, because this would change the report card for the math section for next fall.
For next fall, though, right?
Correct.
So if we didn't want to vote today, if we didn't, we could vote in another meeting?
You could at the next meeting, absolutely.
If you're not, if you're not ready, some people prefer to have an extra little time to think about it.
I'm thinking that right now, but that's why I'm paying attention. I just want to know.
No, so that, no, great question.
Thank you.
And the last piece actually is more global across content. So this is not just for math. This last piece is the numerical language. So students don't get letter grades, they get numbers for three, two, and one. A four is the thorough in-depth understanding. And we want to propose that a two, instead of saying demonstrates a basic understanding, we would like to change that across all content K to four to demonstrates a developing understanding. And the reason is, is that basic, we feel like when we talk to parents, has a bit of a negative connotation that they're very basic. And I, as a parent myself, I think that word, it, it just has negative connotations. But I believe that in Foxborough, we really do try to embrace this growth mindset for kids. You're on your way. We're all on some continuum to get there. This word developing sort of sends the message that, that they are on that track.
And at the same time, it's the standard for the end of the year.
Correct. Correct. It's still the end of the year standard, yes. So that was the last piece of the report card.
That has been a conversation since we developed the report card, and it's one that we have year after year, the basic versus developing.
One of the things since I got here, the first day was, can you change the report card? And I said, I don't think I can do that. I don't think I have any power to change anything.
That is actually true. She asked me about it immediately.
I said that immediately because teachers were asking me quickly and I just said, oh my gosh, I don't know. But now I know. And so that's what we're asking is that if we can just change that language, I think teachers would, would feel so much better assigning that number and feeling as though they were correctly giving that student what they had made.
It's an accurate depiction. And I think it actually piggybacks on the review on the other side as well with the four, because the four is really you're exceeding the expectations of the grade level. So having those opportunities for enrichment really gives teachers the feeling that they can back it up with the data to show that the student has exceeded the expectation.
Right.
So it's really important.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, Debbie, what did you say?
I like it.
I'm glad you like it. I like it too.
Good.
Well done.
Questions? Any other questions?
So, well, do you-
I guess my personal preference, because I just, I already asked the question and said it, I'd prefer to table and come back for another meeting. It's for the fall. I appreciate all the work that's been done, but although I kind of figured it out when I got this, because it wasn't a specific agenda, I figured it out that there was a revision there and then you gave us this tonight. So I think it makes some sound sense for us to just pause and let it happen in the next meeting maybe, something like that.
Absolutely.
That's what I would recommend and prefer.
I would actually prefer to think about it as well, just to kind of review everything.
That's all right. Well, I'd like to make a motion that we table this for further thought and discussion at our next meeting, two weeks hence.
I second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of tabling? Five zero zero.
If Noel's not able to make it next meeting, are you okay with that, with having Dr. Mello here?
I'm very confident that Dr. Mello could answer any questions if Noel can't come back. And you've explained everything very well all the way.
If we have time, if we have questions, we can reach out.
Exactly. Absolutely. Right. I mean, we can reach out to you anytime in the next two weeks, right?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Which is a good way to do.
And I would just like to say one last thing as far as Noel. I mean, this is your first full year here. And to take on the role, as you were talking about before, how Allison had set it up so nicely, but really you have done an amazing job in what you've done this year. Not only just with the math review, but everything else that you've touched along the way. It really is quite remarkable how you jumped in to this math review, but everything else, the relationships you've built, the respect that you've gained.
She's added so many new and exciting things for parents and teachers, and you just continue to add value. And I know that you will back that up. I, I always make the analogy to that movie Weird Science where they build someone in the lab. If I could build her in the lab, it would have been her. She's amazing.
I'm very, very fortunate to be here, so thank you.
We're so lucky to have you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. We'll call you our new TVA, our new tax advisor.
Erin, Michelle, thank you for coming and representing the committee.
Ms. McCarthy and Ms. McCarthy.
If we don't see you again, have a great summer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's getting to be that season when we can say best wishes.
So let's make a note to put that on the next agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, thanks for that. Thank you.
No problem. At any time we need to take, put a pin in it, particularly when something-
It's a lot of information for one night.
Yeah, I want to see it.
Yes, it is. It always is on a curriculum review evening.
One of our former members, Mr. Uden, used to like to, to take a couple weeks and think about things.
Well, up to a couple of months.
Sometimes. But, you know, it was always good to take that moment or moment or time to reflect. And it is serious work that we're doing here. We always want to make sure we're getting it right, you know? Okay, moving on. We're actually a little ahead of schedule for now.
Right.
For now. The review of the superintendent's evaluation process. Amy, Dr. Berto.
So you have a lot of information in your packet. I'm going to go through this information, but at the same time, not read everything, of course. So in 2012, the Massachusetts Department of Education changed the evaluation, really the whole program for teacher evaluation in the state. And that went for administrators, it went for superintendents, and it became much more thorough. And we have now a consistency in expectations across districts, across the Commonwealth. And that's a five-step process. So what you have in your packet is a lot of the background information of what describes that process. So I'll just highlight a couple of things there, but in the end, what I want to be able to get to, which is the most important, which is step five here at the end, which is the self-assessment that I have conducted of myself, because you will then each individually be evaluating and providing that information to the chair in order to culminate that into my final evaluation, which will come in actually July. So the first thing that you have is just a memo that highlights all of the five really documents and some of them lengthy that, that you have here. The first one is an overview of this five-step cycle. So where two of you are new to the school committee and actually won't be participating in the evaluation, I still want to go through this because next year you will. And I think that the discussion's really good and particularly where I have been able to meet, and Debbie did this before me individually with each school committee member, for you to share with me your thoughts or questions that you might have based on information that's here, even though you're not going to add to this evaluation this year, I'd really like the opportunity to still meet with you individually, to hear your thoughts and, you know, any feedback that you have as well.
I think that, I think we've kind of established that as practice, that's part of it.
And I can also share that as a side note, as part of the forty-one of us in the new superintendent's induction program, where I have, you know, a little bit of a leg up than thirty-eight of them, starting last January. And going through this process last year and when we share, because that was one of our last meetings where, where we, that we talked about the evaluation process, because it's very daunting to be evaluated by five members in public and providing all this information is, it can be intimidating.
It certainly can.
And so it was a big topic. And one of the things that I shared, and it was shared out with the rest of the group, was the benefit of meeting with each of you individually and the information that's gained from that. It's just, it really is valuable for you, I hope, and then definitely for me.[1732.88] It's just, it really is valuable, for you, I hope, and then definitely for me. So that five-step process really starts at the beginning of the school year. It starts in July, when we're talking about our goal-setting meeting. It starts with looking at our strategic plan and where we're heading as a district, and then myself looking at the superintendent rubric and looking to where I fall on that, and helping to generate and develop my goals for the school year. So that is the first step in the process, which is the self-assessment. It's really, it goes back to that rubric. It's something that teachers do at the beginning of the year as well. They have their own rubric to identify, well, where are my strengths? Where are my areas of growth? Where do I want to push myself? Or what does the district need in order for me to really focus on in setting goals? And so that goal-setting process is with you in July starting, but then it is presenting my goals to you at the August meeting before the school year starts. Those goals are professional practice goal, it's a student learning goal, which we'll get to, talking about where I now am and on those goals. And then district improvement or other goals. But by the state law, we have to have a professional practice goal and a student learning goal. So then, taking those goals and thinking about what the plan is for the year, implement that plan, and then we go through the school year and we, we do the work, but we stop at about February and we do that check-in, that mid-cycle, looking at where am I on those goals? And at the same time, based on what really kind of came back to Bruce Gardner, we think about...
Those two questions.
What is it that I'm working really hard on? What am I really proud of? And then also, what is still really challenging? And that's something that in February, I spoke with you about, and that really was, to kind of go back, since we do have two of you that are, that are new to the table here, I spoke to the work that we were doing in equity, as far as what I was really proud of. So we started that at the administrator team, and I think that really speaks to the instructional lens. Yes, we have the day-to-day work as, as administrators, but we really do have a focus on the instructional core and looking at equity. And we had during our administrator meetings, looking at the data, here's the groups faring on different, like MCAS is an example, what group do you think this is? And then administrators may have thought, well, that's our special education population, or that is a particular ethnicity group. And really asking some questions and digging into what that data looked like was the beginning of that equity work. And then it has continued from what we've continued to look at at administrator meetings out into the schools, with Allison actually going and leading staff meetings and taking that work from our administrator meetings, and then filtering that out. So that's really implementing the plan, but that's something that I'm really proud of, that work that we've started. And then at that same time in February, at that mid-cycle, that fourth step of the process there, what am I working really hard on and continue, is being part of that new superintendent induction program. It is very time, there's a lot of time that goes into it, there really is. We meet one day, full content days, in addition to those. I have a coach that observes me. She's been here to observe me at school committee meetings. She's here monthly. She's observed me a number of administrator meetings. She observes me in walking through classrooms with principals, listening to the feedback that I'm giving to principals, what we see and what the dialogue is. And so then that's been a great partnership this year, and to be able to have someone come in and look through a different lens. But I have to say that it's been so exciting because she's so impressed with what we have here. And just the example that I gave earlier about watching the math specialist and the teacher, and just amazing. But she's been really impressed with our administrator meetings and what our focus is. It's not on administrivia. It really comes back to teaching.
I love that word, administrivia. That's a good word.
So in that last part, the mid-cycle, what challenges do I face? That really is that ongoing challenge that we all face in continuing to meet the needs of the social, emotional, mental health of our students, and making sure that they're in a place where they can learn, and making sure that we have that safety net there for them and the supports in place, so that, that learning environment is there for them to thrive. So, that was the mid-cycle in February, and now we are at this fifth step, which is the summit of evaluation, that comes at the end of the year, where I provide you information on how I feel that I've done on my goals, whether I've met them, or made significant progress, or exceeded them, et cetera. And then at the same time, looking at the four standards that were all evaluated on, and evidence of meeting those standards. So the second document that you have in here is the implementation guide for the superintendent evaluation. It describes the whole process. It has a copy of the forms in here once again, which I have towards the end of the packet. And then at the end, it has some pages here that really talk about, well, what's the school committee's role in the evaluation process? So a lot of really good resources, if you have questions, kind of FAQ kind of idea too. So that's what that next document is. The document that follows is the actual rubric. It is comprised of four standards. The standards for administrators differ slightly on two of them than teachers. So the first standard is instructional leadership. So as for teachers, it's more on curriculum instruction. For the second, it's management and operations. The third standard's family community engagement, and the fourth standard is professional culture. And there's many indicators and then elements. It's many pages long. But one of the best things that happened out of this evaluation for the state was looking at our superintendents, as well as teachers or principals, what is the expectation? What does it look like to be an instructional leader? So to have a rubric that really defines, it provides opportunities for conversations, but it also provides what I feel we're strong at, which is really focusing on teaching and learning, but again, maybe districts that weren't focused so much on that. This is where our efforts should be, because it's about students. So you have that document there, which is the very lengthy rubric. The next document that you have is a blank copy of the forms, which you would use in the evaluation of me, to be able to jot down your thoughts based on the information that I'm providing you. I can also send this to you electronically.
I was just going to ask you.
If some of you prefer to have it electronically.
More space.
So I will, yes, I will email that to you.
And that's a handwriting on my part.
I, I'm the same, I would much prefer.
I would appreciate that.
To type. But to really get to the meat of this, if you turn to the last document that's here that says self-assessment of goals and performance standards, that's really where I wanted to focus the conversation here. So you will be providing a rating for me. The first, you'll look at the goals and how I've met my goals, whether I've met them, some progress, significant progress that are exceeded, and then a rating for each of the four standards, and then an overall rating. So what I have for you first are the summit of an update on my goals. So I'd just like to go through the goals first. The first goal was to, which is my professional practice goal, was to prepare and present a full superintendent's entry plan report by March 2019, and to create a comprehensive overview of the school district in order to identify areas for improvement, or that require further inquiry to develop strategy around those areas. So I presented April 1st, that plan. I also provided that in your packet, again, for those of you that didn't have it, or for easy access, because so much of the work this year is within that report of findings. So I feel like I have met that goal as I've presented that very lengthy document, and we are using that to develop our strategy for improvement going forward. The second goal, which is the student learning goal, was to implement a superintendent-student advisory council, my favorite goal by far this year. And that was really because I value student voice, and what they have to say is really important, and you learn things that you might not learn in any other way, other than hearing from them.
I, I have to interject that I have spoken with several members of your student advisory council, and they love being on it, and they feel very heard in their voices, and they really like you.
Okay. Well, I really, I really like them, and I had, so I, you'll see, I have information afterwards that is really relating to what did we do all year? We met monthly, we met nine times during the year. I would bring questions for them, and we would discuss topics. So as an example, some of the topics included what motivates students. I wanted to talk with them because our instructional rounds that you see later on in standard one, where we're talking from an administrative and department head and teacher's side, well, what are the students saying about what motivates them? So that was a topic of discussion, the future of schools from their perspective. There's student advisories here at the high school, hearing about that. Computer science education, where we're with Dr. Mello's leadership there with Project Lead the Way, and going back to that pathway and building that, to hear from their perspective has been really important. The vaping and other wellness topics, what are the kids saying about that? And hearing from them, school safety, advice for incoming freshmen, and any other topics that they brought up, because I always would ask, what's on your minds? And to see what they brought forward.
One of the really interesting, unexpected maybe outcomes, was having students from different grade levels be together, and some of the freshmen starting to think about college applications because their peers were talking about it in this forum. And it was really exciting for them to feel like they had a jump on that whole process, because they could see it through the lens of an upperclassman. That was really fun.
One of our sophomores said, when can I make an appointment with Mr. O'Neill? No, talk to him. She came back the next meeting and she said, I met with him.
Yeah.
So, it was really great. But I, I asked them on our last meeting a couple of weeks ago, what did they get out of being on? I asked them if they would continue, other than our seniors, and asked what they were able to take away from being on the advisory council. So I had some quotes there from what they said. We can make a difference. I thought about things that I wouldn't have thought about. That was a really interesting one with some of the topics that we discussed. I think it's cool to hear other perspectives. It changed my opinion about advisory. So, hearing about the reason that we have student advisory, and what that looks like, and the curriculum, and do we have areas for improvement? Absolutely, we do. But to hear from the kids and what they were taking away, one of the students said, the lesson I remember from advisory focused on growth mindset, I always think about, oh, am I having a growth mindset on this, or is it fixed? That's our opportunity to really reach students in a different way.
And one of the students said, as a result of being on this group, said, oh, I didn't realize that other people, I had this opinion, and I guess it was only just my friends. I thought everybody felt that way, but now I see that you don't all feel that way, and it really changed the way he perceived something. I thought that was really cool, too.
And I, I find it very interesting how well the different grade levels all seem to work together in this process.
They did. At the beginning of the year, they were kind of shy, but by the year, as it went through, they were asking each other questions, and it really opened up. And to hear them say that their friends asked them, they knew they were on the superintendent student advisory, and they would ask them, well, what do you talk about? And then would say, well, bring this topic up. So...
That's good.
A direct line to the superintendent.
Yeah, yeah. It's great. But my favorite part, I have to say, at the very end, when we were kind of done discussing all of this, one of the students said, well, what did you get out of this?
They asked you.
They asked me. So I was able to share with them, back to our very first meeting in September, you know, I first started, said, remember when I said you're going to be the best part of my day? And you kind of like, yeah, right. Said, you were the best part of my day. And just hearing their perspectives and their questions, just a great, great, great group.
Do you plan to continue that next year?
Yes. And we will add on freshmen for our seniors that have graduated.
And thank you for the opportunity to be included. I really enjoyed it very much.
I mean, even Officer Azavido, our school resource officer, based on some questions, had him come in and he joined us for a little bit.
Good.
We were talking about things. So we had like guests come join us too, based on questions that they were asking.
How long were these meetings?
Forty-five minutes, but sometimes they go more like 55, and they have to, because they come during sea lunch, and then they miss 15 minutes of class. But we scheduled it to where they never missed the 15 minutes of the same class during the year, which was a challenge, based on a seven-day cycle and meeting monthly, and teachers knew, and so we'd write them the pass to, to go. But, so anyway, it definitely met that goal, and it was the best one. District improvement goal, this was our, this was a two-year goal in working with our results on the OECD test for schools, met that goal. We will continue to do that work. We'll have the results coming in in the fall from this third administration of that test to continue to see where we can make those global connections is a big piece, because it is a cognitive test, unlike MCAS. So it's really looking at how they're applying the skills and what we're doing within our own curriculum to be able to assess the level that that really entails. The fourth goal, which is what we've talked about this evening, which was to conclude contract negotiations for all of these different units. So I have said significant progress in this area, because we've yet to ratify with educational assistance and the teachers' association. So have successfully concluded with maintenance and custodial staff, extended day, bus drivers, food service, as of this evening.
Yes.
That's great. Any questions on the goals? Okay, so for the next four standards, because there's a lot of information, and I could have written a lot more, but I finally got to the point where I'm just going to stop. If you have questions to meet with me individually, or any questions from tonight that you would like me to bring information back for the meeting on the 17th, I will do that. So standard one, I'm just going to highlight a couple of things, and then go through each of the four standards. So the first standard for rating would be instructional leadership, and that's looking at curriculum instruction, assessment, evaluation, and data from my role as superintendent. And I really feel that the work within my entry plan and the findings from that speak to all of those things. So you have that very lengthy report that talks about where are our strengths, where are our opportunities for growth, and the essential questions that will guide our work moving forward. So that is a lot of the work from this year that really hits all of those different indicators. And then if you look at all the different elements within the rubric, you will see that it speaks to, to all of those. Again, focusing on our culture and climate and gaining a deeper understanding of where we are in our current conditions, a lot was validated, and then again, where we're going to continue to put our efforts going forward, such as the math curriculum review and the recommendations that you heard from that this evening. Other areas too, and it's mentioned in here later, is we're in the recommendations and implementing those from our preventing and minimizing bias and discrimination from our curriculum review cycle from last year. So, that would fall there. I mentioned earlier that our leadership team is not just administrivia. We're very much focused on the core of the student, whether it's the whole child or the academics, and focusing our meetings on equity. I'm really proud of the work that we do in our administrator meetings. It gets to the point, we're reading articles for every single meeting.
We have a book.
We've got a book that's on equity, that has different chapters from, from many famous authors, and then from practitioners too, and thinking about like Sue Sakowitz from Brockton Public Schools and the work that she's done, and having chapter chats where principals and the other central office administrators choosing a chapter and coming back, and we bring that back to our administrator meetings. So we're very much focused on instructional leadership. The instructional rounds, we're in our fourth year of that, continuing to work with that group. And I have to say that I think as a district, we're really fortunate that we can spend our time in those kinds of things.
That's for sure.
And I had mentioned that the equity piece, and really tackling that. Any questions on standard one?
I, I actually just had one, one minor question. I, I, you said as part of your new superintendent induction program that Dr. Lacore comes and observes you. Does she write up evaluations?
It's not supposed to be used for any kind of evaluation for this. It's just feedback for me. That's a really good question, because that came up, that came up in our, our last full day meeting. It's not to be used. So it's conversations and feedback that she gives to me.
That's great. I, I was just curious, you know, how that part of the, the entry plan worked.
She's now...
Induction program.
She's now participated in a school site visit at all five schools with me. So the principals really know her well now, and they know her from our administrator meetings. So we're all benefiting from her, you know, vast knowledge and experience.
Yes, exactly.
She has never gone by me without stopping me and telling me how fortunate Foxborough was to have you.
Oh, thank you.
She makes a point of it.
I was just curious. I, I don't feel that I need to see something like that. I was just wondering, you know, how, yeah, how, how that worked with the observations.
It's kind of the same idea in a way, with our mentors for our teachers. So they don't share the information with their principals. It's that relationship that they have, so you have that trust. And I feel like I really kind of won the lottery with her and her experience, and all of the principals and other administrators feel the same way.
She was wonderful when she came to the school committee and met all of us at the beginning of the induction.
But that's wonderful, she knows all the principals now, too.
Yep. So the second standard, management and operations, that looks at when we think about more of our environment, when we think about human resources, hiring personnel, scheduling, following all of our policies and laws in school and state laws, et cetera, and then our fiscal systems. So some of the things that I have here that I think, first of all, we know that we must have an environment that's safe and supportive in order for students to learn. And that goes here to that first indicator of environment, with our public safety, Foxborough Police Department, with the Fire Department, meeting with them regularly, weekly, having all of the support that we have from them when it comes to... when it comes to drills, when it comes to debriefing, when it comes to just our safety practices that we have in place, looking at our buildings, hardening access to our buildings. We're so fortunate to have Foxborough be the recipient of many other national partners at the same time. When you think about having Gillette. So, for example, Chief Baker, where he came last spring and trained all of our teachers, he came back again for our new staff that weren't here this year. So I really feel that that partnership is critical, that where we have a relationship to where we meet weekly. And the second school resource officer that was added, even though Officer Monteroso is designated for the Foxborough Regional Charter School, he's been very visible and active here in the five schools, whether it's been for lessons, when they come in and do lessons with our middle school, or whether it's for any of our drills. So it's been a gain for all of us by having that second school resource officer be available and present at the same time.
I know the police department's been doing High Five Fridays, rotating all the schools, and not just our resource, all of our officers who are available. I think it's just fantastic. I love to see the photos on Twitter and.
And that was Michelle McCarthy's idea.
That's a great idea.
Just to be able to have, when the kids come off the bus in the morning, or they're getting on the bus, to be able to have High Five Fridays, just again, that visibility piece. So that's an area for environment. When we look at personnel, obviously, you got a great example this evening of our process when we're hiring. The same is true for teachers. When we, our pool of applicants is deep and wide for teaching positions. We will have three hundred applicants for a grade-level teaching position.
Three hundred.
And we have the process that goes through. Every last hiring is an interview with me.
I was, I'm glad you said that, because I have been here so long that I.
When did you first start? I don't remember.
Two thousand and six, I think it was. I just thought that was normal. But now that I've been in all these groups, and I realize not every superintendent interviews every person, and I see, because I see you going back and forth, back and forth, to bring these people in. So that's a credit to you. I'm glad that you mentioned that.
It's a great opportunity to see all of the work that was done before the recommendation comes up from the principal, and then have one last opportunity to really get to know someone. And it validates the work that the principals do and all of the committees that they have.
Think of the impression it makes, though, on the new employee, that they're important enough that the superintendent takes time out to welcome them in to the district. I think that's really important for our culture.
And then at times, too, we have during, this is not just the end of the school year. This happens during the school year as well, when we have, for instance, educational assistants. I meet with every one of them as well. If they, they're getting teaching jobs, which is what the goal is, so they might leave us, and so we hire maybe an educational assistant in the middle of the year. So we're happy for them. But again, then it's a position, so it's an ongoing as far as personnel all year long. And then we have times that, you know, other things that will take place. And I feel like, you know, those things are handled promptly and confidentially, and I mean, in the best interest of students. Our budget, we're very fortunate with the town of Foxborough continuing to support our budget, particularly, I mean, you, as far as AdCom, have been supportive of our budget from that stance, having the liaisons from AdCom. But I think that all of that work that we do here to be able to prepare, and the amount of work that Bill does on the budget, it really has, it's what I think for the sixth year in a row, where our budget, as well as CIP, has passed with confidence at town meeting. And it's because of the support of the town, and I think the work that we do behind the scenes. And then a lot of time has been spent. I haven't spent as much time that Bill has spent on the school building committee this year, and Tina, as well as coming to monthly meetings. And in addition to that, we have other meetings that take place. But there's been a lot of time and effort on the management and operations side on the borough addition and renovation project.
There'll be even more coming up.
And there will be more.
When will that start? Do you know?
Octoberish.
In the fall?
It's coming fall.
So a lot under management and operations. Any questions there? The third standard, family community engagement, that's really looking at the engagement in our school community and also outside our school community, sharing responsibility, communication. And I think that it's really important for the superintendent, and I know that you value this as a committee for the superintendent and assistant superintendent, to be visible in schools, in the community, because we're the eyes and ears to really be able to get a pulse on what are people saying. And if it's something that we need to address, to be able to hear that in different ways. So I continue to be very visible in outside school activities from outside of the day, whether it's concerts, because, plus, they're a lot of fun to go to. And our kids are so talented. Musicals, the dramas, you know, just art shows, the games, the family nights that we have.
Fenway Park.
Fenway Park, winning in third.
Overtime. I mean, really.
Yes. So, you know, visibility is important, I think, for the school system. So I'm out there, but at the same time, I gain so much, and it allows me to build better relationships with our families and the schools. And then also, under the standard, I think a lot of the entry plan findings speak to this as far as all of the stakeholder groups that I met with and what they're saying and being involved, and the value that is there. Continuing to hold the parent leader meetings, the evening community coffees, that anyone can come, no set agenda, whatever's on their mind, those are held. As far as outside of the schools, serving on the YMCA Child Protection Committee, also on their Board of Incorporators, being a member of the Foxborough Child Sexual Awareness Committee, and then being active in trying to bring things that are important, such as hidden in plain sight, bringing that back through Saint Coalition this second time, and then working with the Board of Health on the dangers in vaping presentation that we had. Those are really important for our community. And the last standard, professional culture, is really looking at the commitment to high standards that we have when it comes to teaching and learning in the district. Because if you don't have a positive culture, you're not really going to get very far. Cultural proficiency, communication, being willing to continually learn. That's so important for our teachers. We talked about that in the math review, too. Being able to really reflect and learn and grow, myself included. And then managing conflict also comes here. So I really feel like that we in Foxborough have a very strong culture. It comes out on our culture and climate survey. Lot of districts don't want to ask the questions, because they may not want to see the answers. We're willing to ask those questions and to look at it and to say, okay, this is an area that we need to address, or this is an area we do really well. But if we don't ask the questions, we're not going to know. And so I think that's something that validates a strong culture. But it will also pinpoint areas that we can form goals on at different times going forward. I think it's important that I continue to model that our focus is teaching and learning. I feel as though that I do that through constant classroom visits and school visits. Some of the things that were already mentioned before, our focus on equity and really looking at serving every child and how we can best do that. And if we're not doing that, how can we do that? It really is asking some hard questions. The professional development work that we've had this year particularly, that came out of the preventing and minimizing bias and discrimination last year, cultural proficiency, having teachers feel as though they're more comfortable when difficult conversations come up, and giving them those tools. If something's said in a class, because of the, really, the country and where we are today politically, things are said, being able to mark that moment and to have a conversation in a way that's appropriate at each particular level, and that students feel comfortable, I mean, teachers feel comfortable in addressing that, and so students feel heard. And the last couple of things to mention is looking at how we can make things more visible. We've had some examples here, when we talked about the holiday hoedown at the IGO as an example, really looking at that as dances around the world, not just having the World Culture Night. What are other ways we can make visible within the community? I mean, even just last week, one of the parents that had come to a particular community evening talking about different holidays, and with MCAS, and if it's a religious observance, like with Ramadan, what can we do, our students are fasting, because we have so many different groups of students that we've not had in the past. And to be able to know that, they emailed me and said, you know, when you were talking about this, I just want to let you know that, you know, our children are fasting, and MCAS is coming up. So I immediately met with guidance at the high school and said, what can we do? Oh, we have flexibility here to be able to meet the needs of the students in a different way that maybe we've not ever thought about in the past. And that really has come out of that work and having people come forward. So that really is exciting for us, to have some of those conversations and know that we have diversity and we can celebrate that diversity.
Culture and climate.
Yes. And I think the last part here is, I really do continually grow professionally every day. I learn from our students. I learn from our faculty and staff. And it really does reflect on my own practice and how I can continue to grow, and that we need to be willing to continually learn and always be willing to learn in order to best serve our students.
Questions?
Good thing we ended earlier on the earlier agenda item as I look at our time.
Are you now back on?
I said, for now.
That's right.
Foreshadowing.
Well, there's a lot to talk about. I remember when we first did the first superintendent's evaluation of Mrs. Spinelli, the very first in two thousand and twelve. I was a new school committee member, so I didn't do the actual evaluation, but I did get her big binder, because accompanying her first self-assessment, she put backup data for every single one of the components of each of the four standards. And it was, I think, about this big. And it was very instructive, but we were all trying to figure out. It was a lot of information and.
The example would be, like, equity. If you were to look at our agenda from our administrator meeting to show what we were doing with equity would have been in that binder.
Well, and exactly. And I think we ultimately concluded as a committee that it was not necessary to have that level of detail. A lot of the information contained within the binder had been presented at prior school committee meetings and was repetitive. But that first initial evaluation, you know, was a very thorough job of putting together the compendium of everything the superintendent does. So I am grateful for the smaller self-assessment, and I know where to go if I need to look at an agenda or for backup. But thank you for going through the process. I think from, just from an administrative standpoint, if everyone can get their evaluations done, at least, to me, at least a week before, have met with you and get their evaluations. I mean, ideally, honestly, I'd really love to have everyone's before the Fourth of July. But if I could get them at least a week before the July fifteenth retreat would be my preference.
And I did email both Mrs. Weiss and Mr. Conley.
And I will touch base with them as well.
And have the packet and asked if they wanted to have us mail it to them or to drop in, so they would get this as well.
I will touch base with them on.
You have, you're going to touch base with them?
I emailed them today to say, I have it ready. Would they prefer to drop into the office to pick it up? Because I want to schedule meetings with them, or do they want us to mail it to them?
And I will follow up with them as well.
So a lot of information. But if there's anything else that you need, other than making an appointment, other information that you want me to gather, please let me know.
Thank you. It was good.
Thank you.
Moving on, to our emergency generator service and maintenance bid award. Mr. Utna.
So as you know, we go out to bid for the town on many services. The generator services that we have in a number of our buildings, as well as Town Hall and Fire, Police and Fire. We had three bidders. Our current bidder is actually not going to end up being the low bid on this one. Kraft Power Corporation is the low bid. Unfortunately, actually, the current one is disqualified. However, their rate structure would have put them in third place anyway. So it's okay. They were disqualified because one of the requirements is that it has to come in in a sealed bid. And they handed it out in an open, which is not allowed. So, anyway, again, I think we have a very good candidate in Kraft Power, and I would suggest that it be awarded as a three-year bid based on their pricing.
Thank you, Bill. Do I have a motion?
I'd move that we approve the three-year bid for the emergency generator service maintenance contract to Kraft Power Corporation.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero zero. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Utna. Okay. We're almost back on schedule, so we move on to other matters.
I know. With so much tonight, I'm amazed that we are this close, truly.
Would you like to start, Dr. Bezos?
Sure. So wonderful graduation yesterday for our graduates. And it looked beautiful. And the students, what a great class, where they're just such a tight-knit group, and they just speak so highly of each other. They really, they really do. And it was just a wonderful graduation. And one of the other things I brought with me here, so our partners and patriots in the craft group, so they provided this shirt for every single one of our seniors. Okay, so my town has six trophies. What about yours? And then in the back, class of nineteen.
They were all wearing them last night at the all-night grad party.
That's great. The crowd, that came from the crafts?
Yes. And then they also had the little, what do you call them when you put them on the back of your phone, the little pockets? The little cell phone wallets. That has that same thing, and they gave those to all of the students, too. So the students loved that.
Well, I would think so.
It's a great keepsake. Yeah, so special.
What about the school committee members? There aren't that many of us. I mean, quite another half a dozen.
You're not the class of nineteen, though.
That's right.
Correct. Let's not get greedy.
So the only other thing, and I know we have one more meeting before school's actually out, but we're in the last couple of weeks of school. And we've got lots of field trips and lots of parents that have been so supportive of teachers through teacher appreciation, through luncheons and everything. So it's, really, this is the time of year when you realize how much parents do to support the schools in a volunteer way that they have. So just really appreciative of all of them. And we've got two more weeks, and we're going to finish strong, as the high school says.
Absolutely.
Well, and I think not only did the graduation go well, but class night was lovely with the dedications to the people, while deserving, who had served the Foxborough community a long time. And then, of course, the scholarship night. I mean, there were so many nights out in celebration all last week. Not just graduation.
Agreed. Brett, do you have anything you would like to add? Mr. Camfield?
I'm sorry I missed yesterday, but I did, actually, I got a lot of feedback from people through various mediums about what a great graduation ceremony it was. So congratulations to all of you and to the, certainly to the graduates and to their families. But I, literally, when I got off the plane last night, people were, I got like, you missed such a great ceremony.
And many thanks to Mrs. Snead.
There's always next year, Rob.
I'll be there. I have a date now.
It wouldn't run as well if it weren't for Mrs. Snead. She always needs.
And our custodial staff, and FCA. Thankfully, FCA broadcasts live. A lot of, a lot of people at home who love to watch the graduation, and they just do a marvelous job of videoing it. So thank you, FCA.
Oh, and I also want to think, good luck to all the teams that are participating in the postseason stuff. So I know that's, that's.
Lot going on this week.
Yeah. So exciting stuff for them as well.
Absolutely.
Congratulations to all the graduates. I'm sorry I was unable, I was unable to attend as well. But as always, it's always a celebration for the town. It's always so important that we recognize the graduates and talk about the great education that happens here. They represent, you know, a nice combination to our education, what we do.
And actually, for those of you who weren't there yesterday, there were 107 recipients of scholarships, and the amount given to the recipients was over 240,000 dollars.
That's great. That's great.
Very generous. We should thank all our generous supporters.
Absolutely.
I would just say, this is not news to anybody, but it was very exciting that we were visited by the New England Patriots on Friday with the trophy tour and visited all five schools.
I found that on the news at night.
Yes. And we got to, students got to try on the ring and hold the trophy, and it was just a very exciting day. So thank you to our friends at the New England Patriots for making memories with us.
Absolutely. I got my son a shirt at the Vineyard Vines up at Patriot Place, and it says on the back, "Every day is a good day to be in Foxborough." And it really is.
Oh, really? I need that shirt.
Well, it's a New England Patriot shirt, but that's what it says on the back.
Where did you get this?
They had a Vineyard Vine. I'm not sure it was a permanent installation up there. Is it still there? It was, it was at Christmas time. I got, both my boys got those shirts. But just to play along with the T-shirts they gave out, and it really is, we're very fortunate to have the connection with the Patriots and so many other of our great community partners. I know this week I saw it was Walk to School Day this past week at the elementary schools, and that was something that one of our other great partners, the Y, partnered with us when I think my kids were in first and third grade or kindergarten and second grade a long time ago because I had a vest and a sign. And we would meet, we don't live within walking distance, but we would meet friends at the corner of Paula and Paula Lane and South Street and walk the mile to the Taylor School. And they were doing the same thing this week. So just to thank our elementary school parents for helping out with that, and our friends at the Y, and I think the police department was there to accompany them as well. So, so very good. Mr. Yucna, do you have anything to add?
Just that the Bruins are on, probably.
Do we have an update on this?
Yeah, stop, Jane.
It's the end of the first period, and the Bruins lead them two to one.
Oh, no.
He has to go home and cheer them on. That's it.
But I'm staying up for the third quarter when I get home.
Awesome. Awesome.
Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Oh, yes, Janet.
I'm sorry. Anyone want to discuss the starting time for your retreat meeting, or is it too early? You want to talk about that next time or no?
Yes. So the starting time, our retreat meeting, we usually meet a little earlier, and Janet usually ranges for some sandwiches and fruit and drinks for us to have during our meeting. We could meet as early, we could start as early as 5:00 PM if that works for people, or we could meet at 6:00. We probably will need to have an executive session at that meeting as well to talk about the superintendent's compensation and contract for the coming year. So we, you can think about it and let Janet know. You don't have to... Could consult your calendars now, but...
Make it as early as 5:00 for our executive session?
I cleared my entire day.
Ooh.
Oh.
It is Monday, July 15.
Monday, July 15.
All right. So you don't have to decide now. But if you could just let Janet, thank you for bringing that up, Janet. If you could just let Janet know.
Oh, that's good. So...
So that we can plan accordingly. Definitely great.
Monday, I could be available from 5:00 on.
I put 5:00 in the phone when we talked about...
Also.
Also, 5:00 for executive session?
Yeah, 5:00 AM we're talking, right?
Be there. PM, just to clear.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Darn.
If you want to go easy, team.
A lovely brunch would be good, too.
For good brunches.
Okay, now. Anything else?
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting this evening.
I'll second that motion, Rob.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero zero. Good night, everybody.